To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with last minute's presence. Everyone, your chance to vote over on. Any additions, objections, corrections?
Motion to approve amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
So perfect. Next up, we have Tammy Monroe to help the purpose.
Good evening. Dr. Hassler is here with me tonight. He's tied along. So get more in few things, I guess. I got a couple of things tonight. I think I should have emailed them all to you guys a couple of weeks ago. We can show them. The first one, I guess we'll talk about is the money that I need appropriated in the four different line items for 1159. That's for the new nursing position that I talked to you guys about a couple of months ago. We finally have plans of wanting to fill that position. So this is part of the $220,000 grant. So the money is coming into the county. I just need it appropriated in those line items for when she starts.
When does she kind of start?
I spoke with her today, and it looks like it's going to be April 11th. So probably won't need those amounts. I kind of just estimated like starting this week or last week. So probably be some of that left at the end of the year. And then the other amount is the $23,850, and that is in our trust fund account. And that is to cover, as you all know, I will be retiring. Our plan is to have a new administrator in place for April 3rd start date. Is that the first Monday in April? April 4th? Okay, April 4th. And then me continue working with the new administrator until April 29th. Would be my last day. So these funds are to help cover, like, both of us in there working and then to pay out my vacation time then when I leave. So, and this is state money. It's not local county tax money. It's from our trust fund account from the state, and state has approved that as an expenditure. So I just need it appropriated. I'm going to try to squeeze in some vacation between here and there, maybe this month of March. So I may, it may not all get used, but that would cover everything if I didn't use any of it. And that's our carryover money that's in the trust fund account that carries over every year.
Interview, I can't remember. You have already started interviews.
Yes, actually, yes. We will, we have a public meeting tonight at 6 o'clock that will finalize things.
So all this has been advertised?
Yeah, well, this does not have to be advertised. I guess because it's already state-approved.
All right. Well, then on the first one, for the for the new nurse.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Period. All in favor?
Is this approval for all four, when those be lumped together, including when we see the perp insurance?
Second one is for the admin benefits to be moved over from their trust account?
I would say we don't approve that, and then she can't leave.
Hold me back.
I motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, ladies.
It is, it is Women's Day. Thank you.
I was not making that motion.
And I guess I should have went on to say to you that admin and benefits for that $23,850. I did not include, that is the salary and the fringe, but I didn't include insurance on that because the perp is included. But my insurance is already figured in the budget, and I don't take the insurance. So that's already, yeah, that's pending.
So did we take it all?
Are you going to vote, kidding?
Not yet.
Okay, sorry.
All in favor?
I don't want to.
Will we see you at the April meeting?
Yes, I will be here at the April meeting, whether I have anything or not, because I will bring the administrator to interview her, to everyone, and show how meeting runs and that type of thing. I'll try and spend some of it. We can move money around or something. And they're supposed to hopefully start the remodel job this week. So things are on track with that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tammy.
Devin is next, and I do not see him here yet.
Oh, and skip.
Devin? I just talked to him today.
Hi, I'm Megan Hoskins. I'm the first deputy in the treasures office. I'm here on behalf of Melinda Klopp. She's at the treasures conference up in Indy this week. So I'm presenting today. Our office has been faced with a rare situation where two-thirds of our staff will be retiring this year. So I'm not one of them, obviously. We have the situation where we do not have a budget to hire somebody in and train them properly with ample amount of time. We have about $4,000 in our part-time budget. But we were requesting to possibly get some more to get somebody in and hire them before the next tax collection.
You're winding hard before May, is that what you're saying? What are the dates of the, do you know what the dates are in the calendar?
August and October. I don't have exact dates. But that is both before the fall collection. And so at this point, it's pretty crucial to get somebody in there before spring collection. Show them how it goes, get them comfortable. You know, this is county effective at this point to hire somebody.
Concerns us as an office that they are the backside of our office. If that payment, if all the payments are not collected effectively, then that's going to set us back on settlement, and then that sets back the schools, the city, all the other entities. And they contact us like the day after collection normally, like, hey, when do you think we'll get our distribution? So from settlement to collection time is normally pretty crucial to try to get that information processed as quick as possible.
They have both people already submitted their notice. You just know that it's going to happen, correct?
Yes, we wanted to get in as soon as we could.
I was also notified that they may be taking a leave of absence prior to that. Is that still part of that, or are they not going to do that, or do you know?
It's kind of up in the air still. With Melinda being out this week, we really haven't been able to sit down and target these dates and surgeries and things like that.
Okay, all right. I was kind of told that that may not happen, so that's a good thing, that those might be put off by at least one of those people until after they retire. So hopefully.
A lot is still kind of up in the air, but.
Do you have an idea of how much money you need?
We have the $4,000 in our part-time. So I was thinking around $10,000. Would cover for four to five months of training.
Well, if you've got one hire now, that would be six months of salary. That's to get you to August, when the first potentially would be hiring. So to hire two now, we're talking potentially six to eight months of pay.
One is an elective position.
One is an elective position, so.
Yes.
One's elective position, so.
If we could get somebody in for April and cover us to August, that should be ample amount of time to cover for the second deputy. And then in October, right before fall collection, we will be replacing somebody.
Because they're going to pick up one of those, they'll pick up the salary that's already in the budget.
Right, correct.
And you can't, we won't be able to hire anybody for that position, because you can't train that.
No, no, that's correct. So.
And that's a position, you don't really have to worry about payout time or anything, because there really is not.
A new hire.
There's not vacation time accrued or things that you have to worry about paying out.
So the cats out of there?
Yeah, I was told this, not back.
Obviously, no, you threw out the $10,000. There had been no pen and paper, Melinda sitting down saying, so that would be ideal for us to have a little better estimation. Do you want?
We just ran some quick numbers on a third, like, basically, we just shot for a third deputy salary, which I think is 12...
Well, if you have the four now, you said if you wouldn't hire them until in April, the first part of April, or sometimes.
April 4th is that first Monday.
The first Monday. We could use the four, and then we, if you, if you get a better figure than, or headed to advertise, is what I was thinking, you know, that way, so that then when we, we could vote on it in April. I mean, if she could advertise, what do you think?
Got the part-time money to get it started.
Yes, that's what I was, that's what I'm thinking, that she could, they could go ahead and hire under the part-time money. And of course, it will run out. But then, yeah, in the April meeting, we would halfway know a little bit better exactly what it's going to be.
So a third deputy, a third deputy salary, I'm looking at the.
Debar doesn't have a third deputy.
No, but if we just use that pay until the actual
Position opens.
Position opened, it would be 127141 a paycheck.
It's basically a third of the year, so about $11,000.
About that, yeah. But if we, if we're already going to start with the four, then the 10 would probably take care of it, wouldn't it, till it, till it.
Right, the only.
Some part-time.
Right, they might need some part-time in there too also.
Only problem there is with, depending on what the other position retires with, I know that that person has some time accrued. So I don't know if she'll be able to get her vacation time taken, or if we'll have to pay that out to her when she leaves. That's why we shop for that 14 number, thinking we'll probably have to pay a week or two out.
We can always address that toward the end of the year.
Yeah, I think so, I think, I think so too. You know, but use, I would think you use the part-time money now, and then, then if you get a better figure, you know, if it's over, if they figure it's going to be more than, quite a bit more than the $10,000, then you could notify us.
And just go ahead and advertise, I guess, the difference for
At least, at least the $10,000.
So that they would at least have $12,000 in that line to cover? Okay, I will advertise for next meeting the difference.
But I think you need to get with her on definite figures, you know, exactly if they're going to be there until one.
When Melinda comes back, we're going to sit down.
So you're going to advertise 12 rather than 10? Or are you?
Probably about eight instead of the 10.
I don't know, but I would just go, she'd be better off advertising the 10.
Just advertise the 10.
You might need some part-time help in there, especially in the fall, when you have new people.
But I think usually, usually it's the first collection that's a heavy hitter, so that's where they're going to meet here in part-time.
And really, they didn't use their part-time at all last year, so.
Yeah, I knew they did not. Yeah.
We could have used the. Yeah, they didn't use it. This year, they will probably, three trained people and two new people might be difficult.
And the court has been open on people.
Yeah, and we actually have that cook traffic again.
Thank you.
Thanks, you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
You want to know anything?
I saw, I think he thought it was.
There you go. I went to the wrong location. Sorry about that. You know, you guys are reading that here. I'm David Sharp, Chief Public Defender. I'm here mainly to address the budget, but I also wanted to just formally thank you all for the, having me on as a position. I think it's important for the county to have a public defender office. I think it's allowed our public defenders to have better access to some of the resources. Managed to find a few things to help make the process easier for our attorneys, and then hopefully that translates to better representation in the courts. The main thing I want to talk to you all about, though, is the budget. I was going down, and one of the things I had to do is submit a budget. And I got a little nervous, because part of the reason why I asked or proposed this office position was to propose some money savings. And when I look at the budget, it doesn't look that way, because of the way the numbers are budgeted. I think you have in front of you, or I think it was in your packet today, kind of a summary of the budget. Has 2021 actual claims, and then 2022 proposed claims, and then what I'm proposing for the 2023 proposed budget. And all it is, the only goal that it is, is to have the numbers reflect what we're actually doing, rather than the budget appear to be running a deficit when we actually aren't. The, for whatever reason, the numbers for contract pay had not been updated to match what the actual contracts were that we were issuing. And that's what, if you look at 2021, those are actual numbers there at the top. So the PD administrator pay, which would have been my position at the time, that was the monthly and annual, and then the contract pay, so that would be the PDs that we have on contract. That's the monthly, and then the annual. And the amounts that were budgeted were far less than that. Actually, it was the budgeted amount total, which is what you have there, is 589, when in reality, the contracts that had been signed were at 764, 764,000. The good thing is, if you go down to the bottom, where I have the net, it shows what the budgeted amount, which was the incorrect budgeted amount, but nonetheless, plus the reimbursement, and then the actual claims, we actually ran, we ran 84,000 positive. So 84,000 remained in the general fund. It just, when you look at the numbers, it looks like we did a horrible job, because it has a bunch of negatives. But in reality, there was $84,000 in the general fund at the conclusion of the 2021 year. 2022 shaped up to be the same, but the problem is the budget reflects previous numbers. And I didn't find that out until I asked for the numbers to produce the budget that I'm supposed to. So basically, I'm not asking for anything other than what, if you go back to the very top, the total PD paper 2021 was 764, 7276. That's what I'm asking the budget to reflect. And then I'm not asking for an increase in the Superior Court expenses budget, which was actually the judge's budgets. Those numbers are the exact same as they were. And then the expected reimbursement, the average over the last couple of years. I'm not sure how far into the league you want me to get, but the county gets 40% back for eligible public defender expenses. So that reimbursement amount reflects roughly what we get back anyway. 250,000 is a, actually, it's a low number. It's probably more than that. I went a little bit conservative, but that's what would be coming back in. So in short, I'm asking that the budget reflects what our contracts say. I'm not asking for actually any more money. I just want the budget to look more appropriate, especially when I go to present maybe next year and show you what the numbers actually did. And I hope that made sense. I wanted to go through it quickly, but if that makes sense, I think that's okay.
I think for several years, the board maybe was increasing the contracts. And when the judges were submitting their actual budget to us, they had left the numbers the same, year after year. So, and I don't know if it was the thought that that much is coming back to us, so they thought they were spending that money, but it never was actually put in the line. So at the end of the year, when we were doing the cleanup, those were the two accounts that I was hitting and cleaning up. This would put us back in line, so we wouldn't have a major cleanup in those two departments.
And the line items for, if you're looking at my summary, the line items for Superior Court and Circuit Court expenses, those are the same, the same amounts. They're just literally, they got moved out of the judge's budgets, so they don't have to submit claims for those two line items. Goes through my office.
When we moved it all to that Department 23, instead of in both judges.
It's made it, it's taken a lot of work off of the staff in both courts, because now there's not five or six people touching the same claim. It's my office really is the only person touched. Does anybody have any questions based on that?
Yeah, we can, so I'll be in communication with you guys. I think after some insurance renewals come around, I'll see if there's some lines that are over budgeted that maybe we could just do a lateral transfer and do that without a true additional. But I think that should be happening fairly soon. But if not.
So for 2022, are there going to be any shifting that needs to be moved around quite a bit?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there going to be shortfalls in any of those accounts that need to be?
Contracted accounts will be the shortfall.
Okay.
Drastically.
So really, until 2023, we're not going to be able to?
2023's budget, we will have it, the actual numbers, whenever we do our budget.
Okay.
This year, we're going to have to do a transfer. And if we actually do the transfer before, or if we wait until the end, if you want me to do that at the end of the year, or if you want me to actually do a transfer before, or an additional before.
I would like to do it before. Do some of it before at that.
It is early in the year.
It could be here, it possibly can.
If we could, yeah.
But I think we need to look at it a little bit, I mean, you know, closer to the budget time, when you work on the budget too.
In Circuit Court and Superior Court, 137.01, where is that getting paid to?
All of that got moved to Department 23, instead of out of 16 and out of 17. In Circuit Court and Superior Court, I think it was January's meeting, we discussed moving all the contracted amounts and all the pop attorney billable expenses to the other department for Devin, so that it will be on one.
But that additional 99,000 there, that's not showing.
That's going to help us some, but it doesn't help us enough.
Right, I just was concerned, it's not noted anywhere here, so I was just making sure we weren't missing it when we're looking at.
I'll look at it, and be sure, but.
Did you send us a copy of?
16 or 17.
Has it all moved over?
Both have this, both have the same line item, 137.01.
And I am an attorney, so I would double-check my math closely.
And really, obviously, comparative to other departments, you know, we typically are approving, not necessarily always scrutinizing, but there are line items, obviously, for postage and office supplies. And, you know, traditional department expenses, obviously, the PD positioning when we started it mid-year last quarter 2020. Many of those in-kind, that your internet, that were coming from your office, you know, doing that work, obviously, keeping it separate. But really, it costs savings for the county, the fact that, you know, we need, yeah, internet costs, paperwork, etc. That wasn't coming out of the county budget. So really, even for this calendar year, we're not adding in some of those line items. I mean, would there be some that you would anticipate even for next year? Are there some expenses that you would want to
Split out.
Kind of keep an eye on, so that you might look to put those in the standalone budget for 2023?
Yeah, and Heather and I talked about that, because the problem is getting, frankly, is getting the attorneys to submit the bills in a way where I can see the breakdown, because right now, sometimes it's a little bit complicated. I am keeping them separate as far as Superior and Circuit, because I think it's important. It's two different types of, two different levels of cases and numbers of cases. So I do like keeping the court separate for that reason. But then digging into what we're paying for, absolutely. A lot of it's mileage, copy, we don't, we pay a little bit for per-page copies for the offices. I did eliminate an expense, every attorney, the public defender's office was paying, or all the public defenders were paying $10 a driving record. And I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but there's about nine of us. And if you're searching driving records regularly, which in our instance, sets a lot of cases. I mean, I found a way to get that through the state for free, so that's one less thing that I had to worry about budgeting for. That was probably, it had to be at least $1,000 a person annually, just because a lot of the cases you have involve driving records. That's one example. I tried, I'm trying to eliminate things like that. And then also just trying to help our public defenders find things like, the big thing that we have in expenses, the researching case law, that's a big, like Lexis, Nexus, or Westlaw, or I don't know what the judges pay for or what they get. But I found a way to find out much cheaper. We don't pay for it, the county doesn't pay for it, but found a way to make it cheaper. But it's those things that you're kind of thinking about, what are we budgeting for? And I am going to split that out. But I can tell you, the courts, the big thing is transcripts. Right now, with, we pay a ton of money to court reporters. And that's the nature of having a court that is moving cases more quickly, and having people frankly go to prison and their sentences. And we have harsher sentences, it results in people wanting to appeal their sentences usually. So that's a direct reflect, I think, in reflection of maybe the way some of the cases are being resolved. That's an expense. I already got a $9,000 bill for a trial that happened. So that just sliced that $60,000 out of Circuit Court already. Those are painful, but they're necessary. The answer to your question in short is, I am looking for ways to split those out, because I think it would help drill down on some of those expenses.
I think it'll, and their budget will look a little different next year, but it'll help explain maybe the expenses that they're actually having.
Yeah.
And we do keep, if anybody ever wants to see them, we keep scanned copies of the, not only the claims we submit, but the actual bills that went with them, and then what supported it. So if it's a transcript or whatever, we have a copy of whatever that bill is. That's probably because we get audit, not only through you all, but then we get audit through the state, and that audit's always fine. I just started seeing all, I just started seeing all things, if you have all things, look at everything.
We broke last month on the grant, the 60% versus 40?
Yep, for the.
For the GINS, or?
GINS and TBR.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so it's an additional 20% for those cases, the qualifying expenses for those cases, which is, which is nice. And the good thing is, we didn't have to do any, I don't have to do anything different other than I had to apply, which we got approved for. And then this year, we have one, one of our attorneys that is down to half a contract, so there's going to be a, I'm testing the water to see if we're able to survive, able to survive on that. Be interested to see where the numbers end up, because we're also governed by caseload requirements. So if we have, our PDs have too many cases, I will have to go out and hire another attorney. But the good thing is, last year, I didn't hire outside of our contract at all. The years previous, we were hiring, we were paying hourly attorneys a lot, because the caseloads were so unrelaxed. And I think that was partly because it's, you're asking a lot of the court staff to keep track, keep track of numbers, and that's what, that's what we did.
And I think that obviously shows the justification for the position. That's what made me most nervous, knowing that, first of all, being and or staying out of compliance can just, can jeopardize our funding and why we're in the reimbursement program. And then also just the, not wasted dollars, but the added expense, then when we're out of compliance and having, not having enough adequate staff to pay additional random attorneys. I know that, obviously, in my opinion, that warrants why we're making things separate with a separate PD office and having a position there.
I could talk forever, but I know you guys have other business. Do you have anything else for you?
I got one thing.
Yes.
Judge Mo spoke to the counsel about the cost on mental evaluations and maybe utilizing Mass and State Hospital. And I spoke to Randy Frye this past week, and he's, we all need to contact the other state legislators and hit them up, because he said he would be willing to look at. because he said he would be willing to look at that and maybe start working on that if he has some other state legislators that would, from our area, that would help him out on that.
We're facing, did they begin to notice resistance then?
Pardon?
Did they begin to notice resistance then from the Madison State Hospital side things? I didn't have an impression from DJ last week, but from.
Judge Mo talked about that some of the state hospitals will help on doing the evaluation.
Right.
And that he didn't realize that he had, because of the large volume of mail that comes across, he said, I may have seen, I may not have. So he said, make sure that everybody reminds not only him, but the other state legislators in our, that serve us to look into this.
And this is what Blaine actually presented.
Yeah, Blaine, yeah.
Not the community corrections.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. It was maybe January, I think, or December, whenever we talked about it.
That's probably the most expensive thing that comes out of the judge's budgets by far.
So if we could save that money, we'd be way ahead on that. So, and he did, Randy didn't realize that that might be an option for us, since it's in our community. And he said that would be a great savings if he can make it happen.
That's another one of those things that the judges have a hard time denying a request for one of those evaluations. So that's why it's almost, the expense is going to happen if it's requested, it's hard to say no.
Just curious, I mean, over 50% are gonna, or less than that, would?
Not very good, there's probably 10% of the, I don't know, 5% of the cases, total cases probably request that evaluation.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're not talking about hundreds of cases, we're talking about tens of cases.
Costly, okay.
Yeah, because those evaluations can range from three grand to nine, depending on what doctor actually answers the phone. And then you're sending them off, and I don't know what that costs the county either from a jail perspective, which I know it's not cheap.
Public, because they have a lot of drive, and that's an extra hour of service.
You gotta send them to two officers, I think. Anyway, the whole thing's expensive.
We'd like to send two because you're, the type of individuals you're dealing with, you just can't anticipate.
And they're not around here, so you don't want somebody driving by themselves that long. Anyway, any other questions for me? Thank you all for your support, I appreciate it. If you ever have any questions, you're more than welcome to stop by, send an email. These ladies are great, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Devon.
Sheriff Thomas, you're up.
Okay, you have any questions for me? Cause I don't, 143 and 41 oohs.
143?
That's what we have in-house.
Okay.
And then I have 41 out. But I anticipate the next week releasing five more.
And the weather's getting warmer.
Well, that means for us, that usually means more of them start coming in. So the jail itself appears to be on schedule. You know, they're, if you go out there, you can see they're putting the walls up, a lot of concrete work and block work going up. So it seems to be coming along pretty well. But that's, other than that, I don't have much. We just, you know.
Everyone healthy, seems like?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
The ham sandwiches are going along well, we like getting away from that blooming.
Okay, well, at least you saved money by switching to cold cuts.
Yeah, well, you know, it's a, we try to save every way we can, honestly. You know, I did have one speaking about mentally ill individuals. I have one now that's pretty, it's pretty serious. He tore up my padded cell again, so I'm gonna have to have that fixed again. So I don't know, the good thing of it is, is I don't send to Florida. We'd always been told there's only two companies, one in Florida, one in Texas. That's not true, we have one up here in Indianapolis, it's much cheaper. So we, we've already contacted them and they'll be down Monday to evaluate it and give us an idea of what it's gonna cost to fix it. That's what, the fourth time since I've been sheriff, they tore it up?
Just a question, Midwest gym supply, do you have to have a certain certification to do that?
I think they're all certified because of the, because of the liability that if they don't get it down or done in a certain way. I have yet to see any company that can put one down and install it, somebody can't tear up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you're, the whole purpose of the cell is for those that have mental difficulty. And they're the ones that's gonna be persistent in what they do. And if it's just a matter of picking with the fingernail till they can get something loose enough to start pulling, that's what they do. There's not much you can do about it, really.
On your, on your jailer situation, you feel it's adequate right now?
Well, Bill Wilson has not come back with the final report yet. I got a preliminary that he wants me and Jasper to go over and contact him back. So this next meeting, I should have everything that you want to do with jail staffing, you know, everything, breaking all the jobs down, cost of running the jail, water, heat, everything. I've got it about half done, I'm just waiting for his, he hasn't certified the report yet.
Okay.
So we're in the last stage of that.
Along that line, Madison said that because of the high usage of the jail, that we would qualify for the same rate as DuPont, Rikers Ridge, and Canaan on the water usage, so.
That's good news. But that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, sir.
And then we go into the COOM rate adjustment?
Yes, today Chris sent me some numbers. And I was able to get the advertising templates from the state. And that is the group of papers you have that's stapled together with the proposed rates. If you guys make a motion and approve that tonight, I can hopefully advertise those on March 29th and April 5th. And that puts us in compliance of the state's two advertising requirements with the proper amount of days in between to actually have our public meeting at our next meeting. Then, I'm trying to think, was after step one, at that time, you would be able to adopt a resolution ordinance? And then the taxpayers have 30 days from that point that they could appeal that. But we must have it signed into the state by April 30th, if we wanted to move forward with that for 23's budget.
Just to be clear, we're not raising any rates, we're just rearranging where some of the tax charges are going to.
Excellent point to make.
Yes.
The total before these changes was .0873. The total after these changes is .0873.
Right.
Rate's not changing, it's just reallocating. So for example, the courthouse is currently at two cents per hundred dollar assessed valuation. That's gonna be changed into 1.2 cents. Or that's what's recommended.
Yeah.
To, you know, 1.2 cents. So with that, the courthouse, I don't know if you have the current toll in there, but the courthouse always, it's been growing each year. And we don't need to grow that account because it's more than, there's more than enough money in there to take care of it. So we can pull back the money committed to the courthouse and that fund and shift that over to bridges and to the jail. So the bridge prior to this change was at .0579. And it's, it's just moving a slight nudge to .06, so six cents. And then the jail is currently at .0094. And it'll be moving to .0153. And that, that will help with the manpower and everything with the jail and the expenses for the jail continuing to go up each year. For example, in 2016, the bounty end of the year was 453,000 in that account. And by the end of 2020, it was down to 363. So we're just trying to keep that, keep that afloat on the current tax base. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Make it shorter, better.
So we would not, we would make a proposal for these changes tonight, but there, or no need for action tonight? Because really?
Just.
That you want it advertised?
Let me know that you want me to advertise these rates.
Because then we officially need to go to the paper meeting that would meet the deadline for the public notification.
I think it has to be done, I mean, I think it's wisest and the best money for your, for our dollars because the other was just staying there, getting more and more, and we're not using it. I mean, it's not being, needing to be used, so it needs to be used, and we're gonna need it for the jail. And I know that the bridge count fell a little short.
Both funds had to be cut.
Had to be cut. And this way, this would help with that also a little bit, because I think there's gonna be a lot of bridges that's gonna have to be worked on in the county, you know. I'm in favor of it, definitely in favor of it being advertised.
Do we need to vote to advertise, or just?
I just needed to know for sure about this, is what you want me, okay, I have it.
I think we definitely do.
Speak now, the governor?
Yes.
Each year, we can go back and look at it, see how the accounts are trending and adjust it if needed. But I feel with these numbers, it's not gonna be a.
A big difference, a great difference.
A quick adjust, you know, next year we'll have to adjust, and here after that, I think it'll be a two to three year timeframe.
Do you want me to explain the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have a resolution for the additionals that we discussed at last meeting, plus one that I was told we need to do. So I went ahead and included it as well. So we advertised for additional for 911 radio in the amount of $34,412. We advertised in the amount, or for Coombe Courthouse for health department windows in the amount of $59,612. For the health department renovation in the amount of $90,000. Out of Coombe cap, computer maintenance contract, we need an additional $17,500 for the year. In lit, we have the ordinance update that we needed an additional $24,960. In Fund 2000, which is adult probation, user fees. When community correction and probation is doing their merge, they realized that they left out a pay increase that is by statute for a couple employees. I told them we can advertise it out of County General. We don't really like this time of year to be doing County General increases. They said that they could pay it out of user fees for this year. So that is the $4,000 that is advertised. And then also out of Coombe Courthouse, the election room, which was constructed over in the annex, was $50,000. So all of those additionals are on that one resolution.
Which is a total.
Which is a total.
284. 284.
Right.
Motion to approve?
A second.
All in favor?
And you did say that adult probation, that's coming out of user fees this year?
This year, they are, it was overlooked until they really started looking at the increase in the other salaries, and that's when they found it.
Okay.
But you don't have to put it in to make it.
Good thing they had it there.
Yeah.
Anything from the public?
So I got a letter from Andrew Lanham, who's been looking at the lost revenue calculations. Just recently, the federal government relaxed the constraints a lot. So if you've got less than $10 million, you could almost claim all of it for lost revenue. So what that'll do is also, I mean, we still have to keep track of it, obviously, and take care of that. But it kind of opens up a lot of things that we weren't sure we might not be able to do, but now we should be able to do. One of the things you mentioned, cybersecurity. So I think any increase in the cybersecurity infrastructure that we're gonna get ready to do, that we might have tried to get out of computer maintenance, we're gonna pull out of ARP money and do it that way. So some things that we really need to do along those lines. So anyway, I haven't had a lot of time to look over it, but I'll look through it and send it off to everyone so they can have a chance to look at it. And then I'll also start putting together a draft of the, kind of the final plan for those funds and send it out so people can comment on it, and then we can go forward.
One other thing I had, it's from the animal shelter director, asked me to run by you. She wants, she wanted to know if she could combine two of her part-time positions into another full-time position. She said, but being open seven days a week, she's having trouble with coverage. She's using two part-times at the moment.
I think what she's running into is someone that wants to work at the animal shelter part-time is normally someone that already works a full-time job. And they can only work a certain amount of hours. And she's not getting that maximum amount of hours out of them that she had anticipated.
Yes, currently the two that she has only works 22 hours a week each. And where she's running into trouble is when they have to transport dogs to Carroll County Medical Center. They're losing one of their full-time people for half of a full day, just being transported.
Two part-time and we turn one full-time, if that was your case, that was your saying? And so forth, you know, bill of day. How much on the, is the city and Hanover, are they helping? I mean, I don't, I don't know where, now that they have been putting in.
You were supposed to be getting a check.
Have we received that?
Did you invoice that?
We don't normally invoice them for that, for any of the.
Meeting last week, she said that Mandy was waiting on an invoice.
How much would you like me to?
That's a good point.
$8,000. I was thinking it was between 40 and 43 is what she was saying.
What we have had in the past, I guess, we can make an invoice for that amount, requesting that payment. that payment if you so want.
Hannah was supposed to email you directly, but it didn't happen.
No, I can reach up to Mindy and ask.
But anyway, it's sitting on her desk.
Okay. Will do. Good to know.
So they they both they are gonna put in approximately what they did a year ago or when they were on their.
I believe Hanover sent their check in.
Have they sent?
Have we seen Hanover yet?
No.
I think they sent it directly to Lindsay and she was gonna bring it down.
Well, if she I don't know that she if she printed and recorded collections, I don't. Okay, I'll ask Lindsay.
No, those don't go in the commissioners line item under their our contributions, they go in.
They go in the animal shelter line item.
And then I had made our commissioner line item enough so that their budget would be fully funded. I went ahead and just paid the amount that we made last year to the animal shelter as of right now. But if we need to.
That's how it's gonna put over, the the 80,000 or whatever.
Right.
Okay, 82.
There's additional.
And one thing I was looking at, we're going through all their their rules and regulations and redoing those, getting things up to date, but the interlokal agreement is from 2007, so once we get into our budget process, I'd probably like to go with the commissioners to revisit that and update everything.
I've suggested it a couple of times, the 911 interlokal agreement actually has a percentage of what each entity pays. It would be nice to have something structured like that moving forward.
We could budget for it.
Everybody could do.
Right, everyone could have a solid budget number.
It's a percentage from each thing, you know, what comes in. You probably have a you get a report on like, say, how many animals are coming in from the county and how many are coming in from the city and how many is coming to Hanover?
She's working on that.
Okay. I knew they had a program at one time where you could they could put in with it and everything with a report and that helped. That would help on your percentage if you're working on the percentage.
Excuse me, who is your president of the animal shelter board?
I am.
All right.
I think she's doing a good job. I mean, you know, when I'm seeing.
Yeah, she's she's she had some things to clean up, plus she's learning learning the job as she goes too, so I think she's doing really well.
I just have a report from the southeastern Indiana recycling district. Wanted to let you guys know that we recently purchased a paper shredder that is going to be housed at the location out here at Jefferson Proving Ground. And so that that is there for the public to use. We have had an increase in our intake of recyclables. We are starting to take the milk jugs and your yogurt cups and stuff that are beginning to be recycled recycled. And this last time that Erin took plastic recycling, there was a large increase on plastic recyclables. So those are starting to be a commodity that they increase the receipts on those. One of the things that is a large project that they are experiencing out there and the they're currently redoing a large section of the roofing out there, which is a large, large project. And that is being done by Exterior Pro. So they're going to is going to start as soon as weather breaks. I think that Exterior Pro is gonna be out there doing roofing, which is is vitally needed for that building out there because they have a lot of equipment that's housed out there. So just wanted to let you know that.
I I have someone at EMA that the the building, I mean, you know, remember, we are still running at the fairgrounds. Some of that is they've still got that out there. Where are we? We have two commissioners here. Do we know any more on where the health the the building that they've talked about behind the health department and everything and that we might, you know, I know it's been he has Tori said last night that he had sent everything to the the attorney for graphs to look at about zoning and all that type of thing. So do we know any more on the what they?
I haven't heard anything back from him. So I mean, I know he's gone through trying to answer some of the questions he was getting from the zoning board, but I don't know what that stands.
He just said we just need to be aware that if we're gonna go ahead with something on that order, we should this other, you know, they're still gonna need someplace to house and the health department is gonna need some things and places to house and things and so forth. So it was, you know, for this size building. So I mean, we don't wanna just leave it at where it is right now, you know, and just kind of let it go and then.
Right.
Still paying rent out there to the fairgrounds, which is, you know, for that what's still there. And and it's not only the PPE that stuff that's there, it's there's there's signs, there's equipment, there's like 150,000, 200,000 worth of equipment that was given, you know, through all through all the grants and all the stuff and everything and that is all stored out there. So you just don't want it.
Forget about it.
Forget about it and set it out there and not and, you know, you you want someplace smart to be and it needs to be more of them, you know. So I just ended up bringing that up to find out if there was anything farther on. He didn't have any more last night. He did not hear anything back recently from the from the that. So but I thought we should think about that because the budget will run out on the what we budgeted for the fairgrounds. It will run out, I think, at all this percent.
I got that all.
Think Commissioner Little had something?
Yes, I did. I have pictures.
Oh, no.
Get you guys an update. Good news for a change.
That's awesome.
Voting equipment has reached its new, hopefully.
Permanent.
Permanent. So I just just wanted you to look at that. The first couple is is basically what we started with after we cleaned it out.
That's pretty. Got stuff in the back, Mom.
Yeah, yeah, we moved all of.
You see all the boxes.
It just went to the west, as you know, space is a commodity.
I'm sorry, Hannah.
But we left her an opening in the back so she can get.
I can go clobber.
And then that's the gentleman finishing up the door Monday morning. And you can see the voting machines are in their home. And you see the first that we decided on the back wall for the voter pads, poll pads or what?
Poll pads, poll pads, yes.
Yeah, and then those are there. And then the printers are over on the left-hand side of that last picture. I didn't get a shot of that.
How about Taffet was excited?
Oh, yeah.
How about Taffet was excited?
Yeah.
And we met our deadline. I mean, I mean.
Well, it went down like clockwork. They were done that morning. She had the U-Haul in the alley that afternoon and it really it really turned out well, I think, so.
Fastest government project.
That was it. We had a two-week timeframe and thank you for what you let me do with the money, so but we didn't have time to fiddle around, so.
That is super.
So that's my.
Great job.
Thank you.
If I could whistle, I'd be myself.
That is super.
And you want anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I like what I can put, project completed.
Yes.
I was second. I was gonna say, I don't know.
All in favor?
Yay. Neat.